We'll call to order the November session of the Williams County Board of County Commissioners. We certainly appreciate each of your being here tonight, and we've got a very nice agenda, at least at this time it appears to be nice, and maybe we can set another record and get out in record time this evening. Tonight, at the appropriate time, Commissioner Bob Barnwell will lead us in our pledge to flag, and that will be following our opening prayer tonight. As we open the meeting, I want to bring your attention two different situations that really merit our thought and consideration tonight. On this eve of Veterans Day, which is tomorrow, I want to bring your attention the fact that the family members of U.S. Army Staff Sergeant Timothy H. Walker were notified on November the 8th, which was just two days ago, that he was killed near Baghdad, Iraq, when his convoy was bombed. His wife Dawn, two children, and his parents, who are Gary and Barbara Gail Shearer of Franklin, survived him. And Gary is the manager of the Franklin Elks Club. So, tonight, as Commissioner Mills leads us in prayer, we want to remember the family of U.S. Army Staff Sergeant Timothy H. Walker. And then, secondly, we want to offer our continued thoughts and prayers and condolences to Commissioner Brockman. She lost her mother a couple of weeks ago, and we want to continue to remember Commissioner Brockman and her family as she mourns the loss of her mom. At this time, we'd ask you please to stand. We'll have the prayer and then the pledge to the flag.
It is said at all times that men are to always pray. And so, we bow our heads this afternoon to pray to you, Heavenly Father, for all the things that you have given us. We thank you for this country that we live in. We thank you that you have sent our people to protect us. Lord, we ask that you would protect the men and women who are in the fields, who try to help us and keep this a safe place to live. Now, Father, we ask that you would look with kindness and compassion upon these folk who have lost loved ones, the Walkers and Commissioner Brockman. And we ask that they would always know that you are always there with your love in arms around them. Now, Lord, we thank you for the state. We thank you for the county. We thank you for this country. And we thank you for all the men and women who are here to deliberate, and not in their name, not in their words, but in yours. Help us, Lord, to do what is pleasing in your sight. In the name of your dear Son, Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Please, join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Be seated, please. If you're present, push your present button, the white button, so we can have a record call of the vote. Ms. Anderson?
I have 24 present.
Thank you very much. 24 present, and thank each of you for being here tonight. We also want to wish our best wishes to Mr. Floyd Anderson, Ms. Anderson's husband. Ms. Lainey assured me to be watching us tonight by television.
Oh, good. I'm glad.
He's not able to be with us, but he's convalescing, and we want to thank Mr. Floyd and know that he's continuing to do well.
Thank you.
Approval of the minutes of the regular October 13th meeting. County Commissioners, you receive this in the mail on entertaining motion to accept.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Chalfont, Commissioner Davis is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Introduction and acceptance of the Highway Commission minutes. Commissioner Wilson, the motion. Commissioner Mills, the second, to accept the Highway minutes as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Under our citizens' communication, there are no citizens that have signed up tonight. We'll move on to communications and messages, and it gives me a great deal of honor and pleasure tonight to welcome to our Assembly three very special people that are here from Leish, County Leish, Ireland. These folks were gracious hosts to some of us that had the opportunity to be over there last year, and we're honored tonight to have the mayor from County Leish that's here. We'll be talking, allowing him to make a comment. But first, County Commissioner Wilson has some comments that she'd like to make, and after that, County Mayor Jacob, Tom Jacob, after Commissioner Wilson makes her comments. If you would, please come to the mic, and we'll allow you a few minutes to speak to us. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, I want, if they would meet me up there, that would be great. Commissioners, for the first time since we have had an affiliation with County Leish, Ireland, we now have representatives here that you can actually see. And I, many, about two and a half years ago, in the summer of that year, I happened to meet Tom Jacob, who is now the mayor of County Leish, Ireland. At the time, he was mayor of the town of Port Leish, Ireland. And our communications back and forth through the Sister City Program of Franklin, we were able to communicate and to actually do a twinning, we call it, and they are just the greatest people. And I wanted you all to get a little bit, for the public to be able to know in Williamson County what that's like. But I wanted to present to them a presidential pin, that it represents Williamson County for our past presidential elections. And I will give that to them, and at this time, I'm going to present Tom Jacob.
Commissioners, I hope you can understand my Irish accent. It's an honor and a pleasure for me to be here with you this evening. The reason why we're here is to honor your Veterans Day march tomorrow. We have brought a marching band with us from our town, and one of our elected representatives is here in her uniform with us, Kathleen O'Brien, and our county manager, Terry Gibson. It's an honor and a privilege for us to be here with you. We have worked with the Amur College over the past number of years, and our twinning has developed very successfully, and hopefully that most of you commissioners will come to Ireland to meet with us. I know Houston and Cheryl have been over with us, and unfortunately, Houston had a bad experience with us. He got the flu from all the rain in Ireland.
Pneumonia.
But I'm glad to see you have survived and are really looking well. But can I just say that we, on behalf of the people of County Leish that I represent here, we are thrilled and honored to be here with you, and we believe that this is an opportunity, another opportunity, in our twinning process where we can honor the veteran, your veterans. And hopefully, or perhaps if a marching band from Franklin can come to Ireland for our St. Patrick's Day parade, we would love to have them over. But anyway, that's, we are progressing on the education, the educational developments front with Dr. Mark Hilliard, the president of the Amur College, and I understand that some of their teachers and students are coming to Ireland in January. I hope they're prepared for the cold of Ireland. But, and some of our people are going to come back next June here to Franklin. I think that's the plan anyway. So, it's, as I say, I won't delay your meeting much longer. I'm sure you have a lot of business to conduct, and it's, I just want to say thank you most sincerely for listening to us and meeting with us, and I hope to meet you all again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Chairperson. Commissioners, I'd like to echo the sentiments of the mayor. It's a pleasure to be here, to see what I would call democracy at work. And what strikes me, it is not at all dissimilar to what we have in County Leish. It is remarkable, when I look around this chamber, and Houston would know, he has been in our chamber in Port Leish, we have the same system, the same circular system. It's not adversarial. It's people in a circle working together for the people of the county and of the town. And it is a pleasure to be here. Unfortunately, it was a sad occasion that Houston had to mention earlier. We certainly empathize and sympathize with you, but I wish you well in your deliberations. And the only thing I will bring back, and I will be turning to my mirror later on the way back in the car, how civilized and polite and gentle yous are so far.
You said you were leaving early.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gives me great pleasure to be here this evening, and I'm absolutely delighted. I don't know how much an experience this has given me. And just to take it back to the members of Port Leish Town Council, and actually to the members of Port Leish Accordion Band as well, and it was a great honor to be invited to take part in the Veterans Parade. I'm also actually Chairperson of the War Memorial Committee in Port Leish, and our commemoration day takes place next Sunday because our church has been rededicated, our Catholic Church, St. Petron Paul's, has been rededicated yesterday, well, it was yesterday, rededicated. So, we're holding the commemoration ceremony next Sunday. But we're also unveiling a plaque for, it's to, from the post 27, United Nations Veterans Association, to our war dead who took part in the wars overseas. So, that's been, that's been unveiled next Sunday. So, and it's, and along with the ceremony to commemorate our war dead, the 1914 to the 1918 War, the Battle of Somme. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The delegation from Ireland will be marching in the Veterans Day Parade tomorrow, and they will be presenting themselves and be a part of that, and they've asked, and the mayor is providing, a Williamson County flag that they'll be honoring and walking with in the parade. So, we're looking forward to that tomorrow. 11 o'clock, 5:00 downtown. Please be there if at all possible. Thank you very much for being here. This time, on our communications and messages further, we have a proclamation that Commissioners Chalfont and Green would like to present, and then after we present that proclamation, we've got some live, I almost said live from New York, live from Franklin, Tennessee, and New Jersey, a presentation by our Ms., Mrs. USA.
Thank you for being so candid.
Oh, you done us proud, that's. Whereas Ms. Alice Olivia Haley of Nolansville was the winner of Ms. Senior Williamson County title awarded at the 2007 Williamson County Fair, and whereas Ms. Haley was also crowned the winner of the 2008 Ms. Tennessee Senior America Pageant that was held on March the 1st, 2008, in Lebanon, Tennessee. Whereas, the Ms. Senior America Pageant is a national not-for-profit organization that encourages women 60 years of age and older to display their inner beauty, talents, and elegance, and to share their experience, knowledge, and enthusiasm for life. And whereas, after winning the county and state crowns, Ms. Haley was eligible to compete last month in the Ms. Senior America Pageant in Atlantic City, New Jersey, and whereas in competition with 44 other beautiful and talented seniors. And on the evening of October the 24th, 2008, Ms. Haley was crowned with the national title of Ms. Senior America. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Williamson County Board of Commissioners, meeting in regular session this 10th day of November, 2008, hereby congratulates Ms. Alice Olivia Haley on her personal talents, enthusiasm, and accomplishments by winning the 2008 title of Ms. Senior America, in addition to the honor and recognition given to our county by representing the Williamson County Fair presented by Tractor Supply Company. And we present this proclamation. Thank you so much, and it's great to see you so quickly. And we have asked Ms. Haley if she would give to us a presentation of her winning talent.
I want to say thank you, Bert, and thank you, Lou, and thank you, Houston, Aaron. I am so honored to be here tonight. I can't believe that I'm standing here and that I actually am Ms. Senior America. It is, I am just so honored and to be with those 44 women and who were talented and so intelligent, and I'm so proud to bring this crown home to Tennessee and Williamson County and my great hometown of Nolansville. Thank you all so very much. And I want to tell you one more thing, that I am going to work so hard this year for seniors and to motivate them to get out, make them more aware of things that they can do, because as it states in the Ms. Senior America Pageant philosophy, seniors are the foundation of America and our most valuable treasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
We've asked Olivia to do her performance that she did to win the award, and live from Atlantic City, New Jersey. Here we go.
Okay, everybody, I'm going to tell you a story tonight about a friend of mine that went on a camping trip in the hills of Tennessee, and he ended up at a little church just like the one I go to at Nolansville United Methodist Church. Now, I'm going to tell you this story in rap style, and I hope you enjoy it as much as I did. Oh, sorry about that. You might know I would mess it up. It's all right. Well, I went camping just a while back with a couple of high school friends, and on Sunday morning, I wanted to find a church to worship in. So, I packed my truck and I headed out when I saw it in a cloud of dust. It was the Ebenezer Fellowship Non-Denominational Baptist Free Will Church. When I walked in, it was time to start, and that little church was packed. There was only one seat on the very front row, even though we really wanted the back. So, I walked right down and I took a seat when a hush fell over the place, and a sweet little gray-haired lady walked up and said, "Boy, I got something to say. Now, folks around here call me Granny. I'm sweet as I can be. Now, I volunteered for everything that couldn't make it without me. I teach Sunday School, sewing bake. I was even in charge of the Christmas play. There's only one thing that I ask in return, and it's a lesson you should learn. Don't sit in my pew. You know, it belongs to me. I've been sitting right here at least 40 years, and that's the way it's going to be. Now, I could tell you I knew around here, but you better get one thing clear. If you know what's good for you, don't sit in my pew." Well, I got up, walked to the back of the church, feeling about as tall as a flea, when one of those deacons walked up and handed me a brown, ice-cold metal folding chair. So, I sat out there and I listened while the choir sang "I Shall Not Be Moved," and the preacher preached a fine sermon on like a tree planted by the water. Then he looked right at me and said, "After the service, we want our special guest to come over to the fellowship hall for some of Granny's red velvet cake." So, that's what I did. After the blessing, I looked down and noticed I didn't have a fork. I thought, well, now, I done caused enough commotion for one day, so I'll just ease right there in the kitchen and help myself. So, that's what I did. After the blessing, I looked down and noticed I didn't have a fork. Stay out of my kitchen. It belongs to me. I've been cooking in here at least 40 years, and that's the way it's going to be. So, if you need a fork, if you need a spoon, next time, stay in the other room. Boy, you better pay attention. Stay out of my kitchen. Well, the next thing she reached up, kissed me on the cheek, said Granny sure hopes you come back next week, but if you do, next time, don't get in my parking place, sing so loud, wear a coat and tie, come early to Sunday School, and stay out of my kitchen. But most of all, I can tell you I knew around here, so you better get one thing clear. If you know what's good for you, don't sit in my pew. But remember, Granny loves you. Yeah.
Now, we see why she won.
The mayor said they don't have this type of chamber music.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Thank you very much. Very well. Still on the communications and messages, we want to thank our Sheriff Jeff Long for being here tonight, as well as our Sergeant at Arms, Mr. Lynn Sutton. As a reminder to you, this is the legislative session of the Williams County Board of Commissioners. If you have a cell phone or pager in your pocket, please make sure that it's on silence as you will hopefully not interrupt our meeting tonight. Thank you, Commissioners, for that, Chalfont and Green for that presentation. Report of county offices will recognize Mayor Rogers Anderson. I know you've got an act to follow, Rogers, so.
Not really. I'm going to ask David. That was the first time I've ever understood rap, so I'm going to let David rap this out. Let David talk about the budget a little bit.
Mr. Coleman?
I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman, but I believe I followed her the last time she was there.
She does very well, David.
She does.
Miss Chairman, County Commissioners, we have our three reports that we give you on a monthly basis. They were laying at your desk tonight. I'm sorry we did not get those in the packet, but trying to get you the most timely information we can under the circumstances. So, we did have a good month at the Cool Springs Marriott Conference Center, received a check this month for $24,000. That report is at your desk there. On our monthly report of the budget for October 31st, we did finish up and closed out our books last Friday and just got those figures today, and I want to thank the school system and Leslie for getting me their information so we could get that to you in a timely manner as well. Nothing out of the ordinary there. This is after four months of our, three months of our budget, so we'll get a little better picture when we get into the six-month cycle, but everything appears to be in order there, Mr. Chairman, also. And then, the report that we've been watching so closely for the last several months, and that's the privileged tax report through the month of October, and you can see that we are still in that decline that we've been talking about, and then right behind that, or I believe also at your desk, and on a legal sheet, we have two graphs that depict the comparison of the privileged tax. On the top of that graph, you'll see a comparison going back to 2004, 2005, for the schools, rec, highway, and fire privileged tax, all those together. And it gives you a pretty good picture of where we are and where we've been on that, and you can see in the lower left-hand corner there, the lowest point of that is the year we're in. And then below that, we have the schools adequate facilities tax, which we've just now been collecting for about 15 months. So, we're starting to get a little comparison on that, as you can see also, the blue line representing the current year. So, that gives you a visual. Hopefully, I think, and appreciate Commissioner Smith pointing that out a couple of months ago and asking us to put that together for you to give you a quick visual of what's going on with the privileged tax. Any question on any of those reports, Miss Chairman, I'll be trying to answer those.
Any questions, Mr. Coleman? I see none. Thank you, sir.
One other item that you'll see at your desk, and we give you every year, and that is our annual debt review for the county. And a lot of information there, and if you want to study that and give us a call, we'll be happy to go over that with you. We may need to have Mr. Cruz come down from Stevens to give us a little more in-depth information, but if you would, just turn to the first page behind tab number one, tab one, the first page behind there. It's really kind of a summary of the whole report, right after tab number one. This gives you a comparison from June 30th of '08 to June 30th of '07. And if you just drop down to the bottom, close to the bottom, you'll see that the net direct debt of the county has gone from 384 million to 401 million. That's a relatively small increase, about 16 million. That's a lot of money, but compared to what That's a lot of money, but compared to what we borrowed last February, and we have paid off approximately $26 million, and this year's budget will be paying off that much principal. So that gives you the total. And then probably the thing that we look at to get a real true picture of where we are in the debt is that last percentage, direct debt as a percentage of our property valuation. Last year, it was 1.75, and we've gone down to 1.70. And I just looked back about five years ago to 2003, and we were at 2.24. So that's certainly a good indication that even though our debt is a lot of money, 401 million dollars, as a percentage of our property valuation and our ability to pay that debt, it's a relatively small figure percentage-wise for our county, and we do have the ability to pay that debt. So as that percentage continues to go down, that is a favorable indicator of our overall debt and our ability to pay that.
Any questions of Mr. Coleman? I see none. Mayor?
To carry on with a couple of issues that David has brought, and I do encourage you to look at the debt book that he's presented there, just to give you a snapshot of what's occurred through the month of October in new building permits. We had seventeen in the month of November and December. If we just have the same amount of building permits in the unincorporated area, we will be down approximately 103 building permits for the year. So it looks like we are going to continue on with this, even though the month of November was kind of flat the way it was in September, but up overall in August. We've also had for your development that you should know about, we've had a request from one of the developers here in our town, they're building here in Franklin. The market, their mixed-use development that they've got, has dropped off substantially, and they have in turn, without any building permits, asked for the privileged tax and for the adequate school facility tax money to be returned to them. They're not in a position at this time to continue on with the development. That will result in some fifteen, sixteen different locations in one area, a grand total of 55,148, 155,148 square feet, or a total of $110,000. They're asking for the money back at this particular time, and you should be, you should know of that. The other thing, Mr. Chairman, and possibly you're going to do it after my speech, you had two late-file resolutions. One of them was in your package. The other one was late filed this afternoon, a little bit after four o'clock. It is, the one that you're going to be looking at, that's late, late filed, is a resolution for me to enter into an agreement with the Department of Public Health on youth-based smoking cessation and educational programs. We think we can, Linda was saying this afternoon, we feel very strong that we'll be picking up about $21,000 on this particular, this grant. We have not put that money in here. We've just asked for permission to allow me to enter into an agreement, and we need to have that done by the end of the, of this calendar year. And of course, you all don't meet in December. We apologize for not getting it to any of the committees, but it was late getting to us the information. So those are the efforts of the grant. And I'll answer any questions.
Any questions of Mayor Anderson? I see none with the mayor's introduction of these two late-file resolutions. If you would, please refer to those. One of them went in a packet, and the other was laid at your place tonight. Late file 11-08-14, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into an agreement with Southern Health Partners, Inc., to provide health care services to juveniles being held at the Williamson County Juvenile Detention Center. We will add that to our agenda tonight unless there are two objections. Any objections to hearing 11-08-14? See none. So we'll add that to the agenda. And then late filed resolution number 11-08-15, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into an agreement, a grant agreement with the State of Tennessee Department of Health for youth-based smoking cessation and educational programs. Any objection to hearing 11-08-15? See no objections, so we'll add that to our agenda tonight. Thank you very much. Moving on, Williamson County Director of Schools, Dr. Sharber.
Good evening. I wanted to start with some good news, and you may be aware of this or may not be, but the Nashville Business Journal handed out some awards called Impact Awards last week, and two people that you'd be interested in were given Impact Awards. One was Eugene Wade from the school system for Behind the Scenes Award, and the other was Debbie Henry from the county government. So if you didn't know that, they're part of the Nashville Business Journal Impact Awards, and thought you'd be interested in that. The State Department of Education released the report card for all school districts today. Have not had an opportunity to review this information with the school board yet, because I've had access to the information for a couple of weeks, but it was embargoed, so I couldn't talk to anybody about it. I could just look at it and think about it. I will be making a formal report to the board to update them on the report card data at their meeting on Monday night. And what I generally do is give them a presentation that shows a year-by-year comparison of how the county has done on the state report card over time. And we did, I can tell you, had a good report card. I know some people, it's public knowledge at this point, so you may or may not have paid attention to it. We had straight A's in achievement again, which we've actually had for many years in Williamson County. But the exciting part of that is the achievement scores continue to rise. So you can be at a straight A in about the high 50, 60 percent. Our A's are now, our math A is at a 72 percent, and our other A's are at the high 60 percents. So in fact, our math is the highest achievement score we have. On the converse, in value-added, which is the gain score, our math score went from an A to a B this year, even though it's the highest achievement score we have in the rest of our value-added or A scores. The expectation for value-added is that everyone would make a C, because a C is one year's gain in academic achievement. So we're still doing very, very well. In a district where achievement is high, it's even more difficult to make the academic gain. So I'm very proud of where we are. We will continue to work on the places where we need to work, but mostly, we're doing a very great job in the Williamson County education system. Oh, and by the way, the per pupil expenditure is once again below the state average. So every year, we look at per pupil expenditure for Williamson County, and every year, it continues to be below the state average. But you might be glad to know that the state's contribution to Williamson County education this past year was greater than it was the year before. So we actually received better state funding in difficult economic times last year than we did the years before. The last year about this time, you approved a resolution for some building projects in our school district, and I just wanted to let you know that many of them have been completed or will be completed by the winter break or are underbid and under progress. So we appreciate your support of the building needs and the additional classrooms and items that you funded. We'll continue to help us to deal with the growth that we have in some areas of the county and the areas in which you funded those additions. We appreciate that very much. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have at this point.
Any questions of Dr. Sharber? I see none. Oh, Mr. Hayes?
This is not a question, just a comment. We have received so much notoriety of the wonderful returns that we've had on sports with all the competition that's been out there, and I think that's wonderful. I also was very pleased to hear that we have others in the Junior Honor Society in the Scholastic Inn. I don't know exactly how many students across our county are in the Honor Society, but I know I've been to two presentations, once at Independence, and the one at Page was just marvelous. There are 63 7th and 8th graders who were inducted into the Junior Honor Society. That's awesome to think of, 63 7th and 8th graders from one school, and I was very proud of them. We had a very inspirational speech by one of our own, and we were very glad to have that recognition. And I'm very pleased when we have that type of recognition, and I hope that we'll get more media coverage on that type of thing, too.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, thank you. I did have a question. Since I was not able to attend the education meeting due to being out of town, when we have an instance where the schools are, have not met the classroom sizes, and sometimes there are additional teachers, and I believe it's one of our resolutions tonight, where we have maybe an overage of teachers in other school areas that don't have that problem of maybe overcrowding due to new students, do we take that into consideration where we could maybe move teachers rather than having to hire new teachers?
We do look at that at the beginning of the year, before school starts, and in fact, we moved teachers and do move teachers every year before school starts. At this stage in the school year, we would be hesitant to move a teacher and have children combine into another classroom and then move a teacher. I think that would be very difficult on children. It's difficult enough to add a teacher and split classrooms, but it would be very difficult to take a teacher out of a classroom and combine classrooms. But I don't really think we have any areas in the county where that wouldn't overcrowd the classroom if we did that. So we budget very tightly and at those maximum class sizes, which is why we go over so easily when new children move in.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions of Director of Schools? I see none.
Thank you.
Mr. Dennis Miller, hospital report?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just a few updates. We did open our diagnostic center last week. We got approval for state. I think there's more, over 400 patients has already gone through it. Knock on wood, hopefully within two weeks, we'll have the garage open. And that's, I think I'd rather have the garage than the diagnostic center right now. There was an article in the Wall Street Journal, says that health care is recession-proof. We're not. We're still seeing people that are scared, have a procedure done, afraid to lose their job, whatever else. Our outpatient procedures are way down, but it's like that every place. And some of the regional, Galtin, they had layoffs, cut back their expenditures. We haven't got that far yet, so, and we're still in a good shape. Is there any questions I might be able to answer for you?
Any questions of Mr. Miller? I see none. Thank you, sir. Any other county office or committee wishing to report at this time? Commissioner Walton, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, tonight, laid on your desk, the Human Resources Committee meeting scheduled for Monday, November 17th, has been canceled due to lack of business.
HR Committee?
Yes, sir.
Canceled, lack of business. Thank you, Commissioner. Anything else? Moving along to elections and appointments. County Commission appointment to the beer board, three-year terms expiring 11, 2011. Southwestern Section Representative Dewey Garland, nomination Dewey Garland. Northwest Section Preston Koff, nomination Preston Koff. I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Walton, the second, was Commissioner Hayes to approve the beer board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Notaries. You've received the list of notaries, the new ones, the renewals, that have been sent out by Ms. Anderson's office. All in favor of approving, all entertain a motion to accept the notaries? Motion is made by Commissioner, was it Smith, second, by Commissioner Langston. Further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous, adoption of the notaries. Consent agenda, there's only one resolution that's on the consent agenda. Resolution number 11-08-1, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda. Commissioner Walton, the motion. Commissioner Brockman, the second. This was approved by the Highway Commission, 5-4, zero against. Discussion. If you're in favor of the consent agenda, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Court of vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four, yes.
Thank you. Consent agenda unanimously adopted. Resolution 11-08-2, resolution requesting the Williamson County Board of County Commissioners' approval of an intent to fund of $56,300,000 for new schools. Commissioner Barnwell?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Mills, school board report was 11, yes, and I guess zero, no. Education Committee?
6-4, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
3-5, 1 against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As you're aware, a couple of months ago, we received this resolution for $125,841,000 and $480,000. And the Education Committee requested that this be reevaluated, and a ad hoc committee was formed of yourself, Mayor Anderson, David Coleman, Pat Anderson, Chairman of the School Board, Dr. Sharber, and Leslie Holman, the Budget Director of the school system, to evaluate this $125 million and really come back to us with a proposal that we could live within, live within our means. And I'd like to commend this committee for an excellent job that they did. This is the fruits of their labor. I think it's basically schools we need to do now. But there's still no funding request for bonding until next spring, and I think that's the total thing. We approved $17 million last time, plus potentially this $56 million this evening. There's no funding needs until next spring, and then the fall and the following spring. It's basically for the West Haven Area Elementary School for $20,800,000, of which, I understand that all the deed restrictions have been removed by Southern Land, so there's no requirements for us to do any things they want. This is our school. The next thing is for $35 million for Southern High School, which will be needed by August 2011. It's a two-year project. We've already procured the land, and this will be on land adjacent to where we're building a new middle school down in Spring Hill. And the third item on this would be the $500,000 for design fees for a middle school, planned middle school that will be on property we own in the Henpak Lane area. But again, that's, I'm really impressed with what the committee did to get this to a situation where we can, we can approve this.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lynch, please.
Mr. Chairman, number this committee, I have a problem with the money for the high school. Last year, we had 129 new students for high school, and we've got enough rooms to last, if we have the same growth for five years. Now, why would you build a school three years before you take two years to build one? Why would you build a school three years before you need it? Well, you talking about a lot of money, and words, first year, if economy stays like it is, it'd take a million seven to open that school. Where we going to get that kind of money except raise taxes, which is seven cents? In words, if you, if you'll look at you, look at you. Numbers, oh, you face, see, we have plenty of room. All we need is rezoning. Why should we spend this money to start this school when we can rezonate and take care of it for five years? I don't understand that. There's not a person in this room would vote this resolution if it was their money they were spending. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Pear, please.
I have several comments on this. First, I don't have any problem with $500,000 for the middle school design. I mean, the design's going to need to be done sometime. But regarding West Haven and also the new high school, the numbers on West Haven, the growth numbers they show, just do not justify spending this money in the timeframe. The school that it's meant to relieve the crowding on is Walnut Grove. Walnut Grove will barely be at capacity, even with these growth numbers, in the timeframe they need it. And there's room at the neighboring schools to move students. They've already said they can move early childhood education, which would free up three classrooms. Three classrooms is around 60 students or so. There's no reason this can't be pushed off a few years. Every, every day we push it, delays the possibility of a tax increase, and I see no reason that this school can't get pushed off. And we heard the mayor say tonight, not only, not only is the privilege tax going down, now people are starting to ask for it back because the growth has slowed so much. I cannot see how we can't quite easily push this off a year, reevaluate where we are on the growth. If the growth numbers next year show, yes, we're going to need it, we can, we can start at that time. But this school is very marginal in terms of its need, and I don't see how we can't push it off at least a year and see where we go. The schools that are next door to it, their growth is, at least per the numbers we have from the school, is zero. The growth just isn't there. And even this growth on this school is very marginal. Regarding the Southern High School, I think it will be needed eventually. And I really, I won't oppose the school at this time, but I do think we can reduce the cost of that school. You look at any of the commodities prices, copper, steel, anything, they're all going down. Whenever these schools, they were projected out. Every time that the school costs went up, it was always said, labor's going up and raw materials are going up. Now, raw materials are falling, and they're falling sharply. Copper got cut in half last month. I just don't see how we can't cut some of the costs out of that school. So I'd make the following amendment. Remove West Haven from this resolution and cut 5% out of the high school, which is 1.75 million. So that reduces the $20,800,000 and also 1.75 million additional, whatever that comes out to be. Thank you.
Is there a second to the amendment? Commissioner Hester? Excuse me. Commissioner Greer, the second. On that amendment. Commissioner Perre, give us exact information on what you're proposing to amend this to, please.
Okay. So reduce the $56,300,000 by $20,800,000 and also by an additional 1.75 million. So I think that the, I think the total's now going to be $33,750,000, but maybe David could check that number. I didn't calculate it ahead of time. And David, I would like to say I do thank the school system for pushing back some of the other schools, even though one of them is in my district. But I do appreciate that they did.
Okay. The motion's on the floor is to reduce this resolution. Where's Mr. Coleman? Thirty-three, $33,800,000? Thank you, sir. So the amendment is to reduce this resolution from $56,333,800,000. That's a motion that's made and seconded by Commissioner Greer. Let's see. Moving to Commissioner Hester next, please. On the amendment.
No, sir. My comment was not on the amendment, but.
Let me come back to you then. Anybody wishing to discuss the amendment? Just raise your hand if you would on the amendment. Commissioner Hancock, please.
I think Commissioner Barnwell was before.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I just, I think this is the incorrect way to do this. The committee that we formed to evaluate this came up with this game plan. And I think it's good that we do this based on the projection that the school system has provided us. As far as the high school, yes, it may cost cheaper, but this is just an intent to fund. The actual bonding resolution will come in with much better costs, and I don't think we need to be changing this. And also, the high school, when it opens, if I'm not mistaken, opens up with just freshmen and sophomores. So it's a four-year program or three-year program to get it to full capacity. So I think it needs to be done now to accommodate the freshman sophomore class that's going to be needed in that year.
Thank you, sir. On the amendment, raise your hand. Commissioner Hancock?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, and fellow commissioners. I speak in opposition to the amendment. I think the ad hoc committee done an excellent job. I think the school system has went the extra mile in providing us the information that are the student counts that we need. I think the developers in West Haven have stepped up to the plate and donated the property. I think that this is well thought out, and I share Chairman Barnwell's feelings on this, that we should move along and get this behind us.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ford on the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got two questions on the amendment. If I might direct one to Dr. Sharber, please. Dr. Sharber, I understood from the paper today that we had received bids in on the middle school. Is that correct? Did we see reductions in the bids on the middle school due to reductions that Commissioner Perre was talking about as far as costs that were associated with that?
Actually, Mr. Fortney was just showing me some information on that, which is opposite what Mr. Perre was saying. But I'll let him come up and explain that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, one thing that I did this evening. We just today, or Friday, we finalized our contract on the South Middle School. The South Middle School came in at $23 billion, excuse me, with everything. I'm talking furniture, fixtures, our computers, the whole project. We came in at $23,725,548. The contractor's portion of that is $19,217,786. That was within our budget of $24 million. We're just barely. I was very much interested in how these numbers compared on a square foot cost of the building versus the last schools that we constructed. And that last school that we did, an entire school, was about three miles away, which was Longview Elementary School. Some interesting facts that we were very concerned because we bid this South Middle School, I think, at a very good time. There has been a downturn in the market. However, what's interesting is we broke this project down into approximately 29 bid packages. That's how fine we got it down, to take a look at each and every item that went into this building. I'm just going to give you some comparisons. And the first number that I read on each one of these will be the South Middle School number. The second number will be Longview Elementary, as it was bid. Now, clarify the first item by saying that on the South Elementary School, we've got approximately $729,000 of infrastructure that we did not have on Longview. So, and that's because we're using two sites contiguous with one another, and we were able to get some roadways constructed for the high school that will also be used for the middle school. So I think with our paving prices, that was the wisest direction to go. Sidewalks and utilities, South Middle is $13.02 a square foot versus $6.34 at Longview. Base paving curbs, South Middle is $6.55 versus $3.76. This is just a fluctuation in the increase that we've seen in asphalt oils over the past couple of years. Granted, our oil costs have gone down, but we have not seen the reduction in asphalt oil and diesel fuel. Construction consumes a lot of diesel, although it's come down, and we're hoping it comes down more. We've got our asphalt price tied to the T-dot unit prices on the cost of oil. And in our contract, we required the contractor to give back that cost based on the August asphalt price. So at the time that he paves, when that oil price, if it's down, we get that funding back. If it goes up, we have to pay up. The interesting one was that our general trades in concrete on the South Middle School comes out to $19.64. It was a slight increase over Longview, which was $18.62. So we're seeing a little bit of stabilization in the prices. Our masonry, which is a big portion of the project, some 1.95 million, came out to $14.24 a square foot, while Longview came out to $16.98. Now, Longview, we had a compressed schedule, and we had to expedite that project, and we paid a little bit of a premium for that. Structural steel, $4.93 for the middle and $3.62 for Longview. Roofing and prefinished metal, we're looking at $7.11 versus $4.66. I want to get to the big item, and that's in mechanical systems. And this is where most of our steel, copper, plumbing, fixtures, and so forth come in. Mechanical systems on the South Middle School, which totals $3.89 million, $28.48 per square foot for the middle school versus $20.07 at Longview. The other big one that we see is electrical for the copper that's involved. Although copper prices have come down, we're not seeing the price come down as much. It's come down substantial. I can tell you that electrical on the middle school is $7.61, and on Longview, it was $11.52. So we are seeing those reduction in costs. We're very pleased with the way the cost came out on this middle school. We've got a group, a design team, and a construction management firm that has worked very hard to negotiate bids. We've had contractors coming to us saying, hey, do you folks have work? That's a good sign for us. We'd like to see those prices lower. But I think for the market the way it is, I think we're experiencing some very good pricing. And hopefully, you know, we can see it continue. And as those prices drop, we hopefully believe they'll pass those on to us.
Would you furnish that in writing to the commission, please?
Yes, sir.
Follow-up, Commissioner Ford?
I'm not going to ask him what time it is. But I do have one other question, and it's not really for Mr. Fortney. I think somebody off of the committee, maybe Dr. Sharber can answer that one. Was it in your considerations of what schools to put, at what point in your plan, was there a consideration of the impact on the property tax? And was this plan derived in such a way to minimize that impact on the property tax in this current year?
It's my understanding that we were meeting because of concerns about the impact on the property tax. So it's my understanding that whatever we proposed would positively impact the property tax. But we didn't discuss that item by item and how each item would impact positively or negatively the property tax. So I'm not sure if I'm answering your question.
I think you did.
Or not. But the way we went about it after we looked at it the first time was simply to look at everywhere we could put portables and how long those portables would last, looking at the projection of students. And wherever we could put portables that would allow us to move that building out a little bit, that was our proposal.
Thank you.
Other discussion on the amendment. Raise your hand. On the amendment to amend this to $33,800, Commissioner, $33,800. Commissioner Greer, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to speak in support of the amendment. Understand that there will be new prediction figures on enrollment coming out in January. I think it would be wise to put off this expenditure until we get the new projections. Another thing, Mr. Fortney mentioned the cost of materials. It appears that the cost of materials is coming down. So that's another reason to delay. Thank you.
Other discussion on the amendment. Anybody else on the amendment? Okay. I see no one else wishing to speak on the amendment. The resolution to amend to $33,800,000 is up for consideration. It's on the board. If you're in favor of the amendment, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Everybody voted, wish to vote, record a vote, please. Ms. Anderson, on the amendment.
Five yes. Nineteen no.
Five yes and nineteen no. The amendment fails, so we're back to the original resolution. And with that vote, we lost the sequence of speakers. So if you wish to speak on the current resolution, 1108-2, please press your request to speak button at this time. Commissioner Williams, please.
Call for question.
Question being called for. Does a second, all in favor, call a question, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
No's, raise your hand. Okay. Call a question is adopted. So we'll be voting on 1108-2. An intent to fund $56,300,000 for new schools. That's on the board. Up for consideration. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty yes for no.
Twenty yes for no. The resolution is adopted. As presented. 1108-3. Resolution requesting up to $75,000 from fund balance for consulting firm and related expenses to assist with selection of new director of schools. Commissioner Barnwell, please.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Mills, the second. School Board passed this, 10 yes, one no. Education Committee?
Six-four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Three-fire-one against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is an intent to fund, not to exceed $75,000 for the school system, to have a search committee present candidates for a new director of schools. I think this is, will be money well spent. In most instances, people don't like to throw their hat into a public arena unless they've got some assurances they will get the job. This allows the confidentiality of the people applying for the job. It also brings in professionals that their job is to find qualified directors of schools for our system. And by having it confidential up until the point where you're down to your shortlist, it allows a more open population to apply for the job. I think it's, I don't think we'll spend that much money, but I think it's necessary to have this available in case complications arise in finding a new superintendent for the school system.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Perre, please.
There are some on the school board that spoke against this because they thought they could do the search themselves and save this money. I see, we're not in a rush to get this person. Dr. Sharber has agreed to stay on to the end of her term. So I think they can do a search themselves, see if they can do it without spending the money. And then, if we need to spend the money later, we can. So I'll be voting against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes. Yeah, I'd like to answer that. I think it's imperative that we use a professional search firm to find our next director. I don't think it's the day-to-day job of our school system personnel nor the Board of Education to go out there and be the vettor of anybody wanting to apply for this job. I think you need to have a professional organization perform this task.
Thank you, sir. Any other, anybody else wishing to speak? Resolution 1108-3 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Eighteen yes, six no.
Eighteen yes, six no. Resolution is adopted. Resolution 1108-4. Resolution appropriating $708,539.40 of state education funds for bonus for licensed teachers, employees. Commissioner Barnwell?
Move for approval.
Second. Commissioner Mills, School Board, 11 yes, zero no. Education Committee?
Six-four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Four-fire, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Barnwell?
Yeah, this is a relatively easy one. It's state funds provided to bonus for licensed teachers within the state of Tennessee. It looks like a lot of money is coming from the state, so there's no local funding involved. And it's really not that much per teacher, from what I understand.
Commissioner Jones, please.
I'd like to read my conflict of interest statement. Because I'm an employee of Williamson County Schools, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation and to my constituents and the citizens this body represents.
Thank you. Make sure that's recorded as a conflict of Commissioner Jones. Anything else? Anybody else wishing to speak? I see none. If you're in favor of 1108-4, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 11-08-5, resolution appropriating $10,018 additional adult education funds received from the state and federal governments. Commissioner Barnwell?
Move for approval.
Second. Commissioner Mills, the second. School Board, eleven yes, zero no. Education?
Six, four, zero against.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lynch, budget?
Four, five, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Barnwell.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is funds from the state and federal government for our adult education program. My understanding is that this will be used for additional hourly wages for people we already have on part-time. It's a little bit of a bonus. It's a one-time expenditure. If we don't get the money next year, it will not be in the budget, and there's no additional local funding.
Thank you, sir. Questions, Commissioner Barnwell? I see none. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted, twenty-four yes, zero no. Resolution 11-08-6, resolution appropriating $25,000 state funds awarded through a competitive grant for schools not meeting the federal benchmark for average yearly progress in the special education subgroup. Commissioner Barnwell?
Move for approval.
Second. Commissioner Wilson, the second. School Board, eleven yes, zero no. Education?
Six, four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget?
Four, five, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, this is an award of a $25,000 grant to hire three part-time special ed. teacher assistants at Hillsborough Elementary and Middle School. This, again, is a one-time expenditure that will not be repeated unless funding is provided by the state next year.
Thank you, sir. Questions, Commissioner Barnwell? I see none. If you're in favor of 11-08-6, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Everybody voted, wished to vote? Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four yes.
Thank you. Twenty-four yes, zero no. Resolution is unanimously adopted. 11-08-7, resolution appropriating $58,442 within the 2008-09 general purpose school operating budget for additional teacher and related materials and supplies from designated fund balance. Commissioner Barnwell, please.
Move for approval.
Second. Second. It was the second. Commissioner Smith, school board, eleven yes, zero no. Education Committee?
Six, four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Two, five, two against.
Thank you, sir. Discussion, explanation, Commissioner Barnwell.
Yes, this is based on the students currently enrolled at Heritage Elementary School. We exceeded the classroom teacher-student ratios, and we needed to hire this person. This person has been hired due to the fact that if we hadn't hired the person, we'd be subject to a $25,000 fine from the state for not meeting their mandates. We don't- this would have been nice if it came to us prior to hiring this teacher, but timing didn't allow this to happen. I'm supporting this fully.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lynch, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, we've already appropriated enough money for seven teachers over and above growth in the county this year, which is unusual. Two years ago in the budget, there's money put in there appropriated for teachers and all people for growth. In addition to that, there was money in there for 53 additional positions. If a school system would look ahead and hired five, 25 or 30 of those teachers, we wouldn't be having this problem today. And we don't need to be appropriating more money for teachers. And whereas it's true what Bob says about one more teacher, but there's a great many people up in the central office that was part of those 43- 53 positions, we could put one of them in the classroom and save that money. What you need to realize, if we raise this money now, we still raising the budget next year. It's a great possibility if the funds don't increase that we won't have any salary raised at all for the people of Williamson County. And we're the one going to get the heat for that. It won't be the school board, and I urge you not to vote for this.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Bane, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to amend this to approve the position but to zero the money. Do away with the $58,442, change that to zero but approve the position.
Is there a second to that amendment? Commissioner Williams, the second. And your amendment, Commissioner Bane, is to- would you restate your amendment, please, sir?
Yes. The resolution appropriating $58,442 should be changed to zero. In the third whereas, the same amount of money should be changed to zero. In the revenue column to the right, all the way to the right, same amount changed to zero. And the total at the bottom where it's added up with the various retirement, life insurance, what have you, should zero out.
But your amendment is to approve the position but remove the funding which would require it to come from existing budget. That's your amendment. Discussion on the amendment. Commissioner Mills, please, on the amendment.
I don't understand it because if we have- this amendment is based on current enrollment students at Heritage Elementary. And then if the second whereas we've used all of the additional teachers that were requested, I don't see how this is going to help us at all. And again, I just want- of course, this is my sing song all the time, telling my commissioners, trying to be school board members, but I don't understand this.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Ford, please.
I'd like to ask Dr. Sharber a question, please, if I might.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Sharber, how many unfilled positions do we have in the school system currently and positions that we haven't filled since the start, since the budget approval process?
We often have cafeteria workers in and out. I can't really tell you. We may have a couple of cafeteria worker positions that are not filled right this minute. We are in the process of filling our cafeteria supervisor who just retired last week. And Mr. Hancock's telling me he has five unfilled bus driver positions. Those would be our unfilled positions, to my knowledge.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm with Commissioner Mills. I'm not sure I really understand it. There may be information going around, but it hadn't gotten as far as me. If you approve the position with no money, the money's got to come from somewhere, but I haven't heard anyone actually articulate where the money would come from. Are we suggesting the school system not pay someone else or not fill another position that's previously been in? I really like to know where that's going to happen. And I don't know whether that's Dr. Sharber-
Excellent question. And Commissioner Lynch, I'm going to come back to you. Talk about, based on this, if I understand the motion and the amendment, it would be funded from existing budget. Where would the money come from in the school budget?
When they hired all those positions, most of them in 53 positions, I quoted that they went to the central office. And whereas you've got all those negotiators in there, consulting people and all like that, they can use one of those people for a teacher if they really need a teacher. In words, there must be 40 people up there that used to be teachers and all that have to do send one of them back to the classroom.
Follow up, Commissioner.
I understand we could do that, but we already approved those other positions as well. So, essentially, we're asking them to drop a position somewhere else.
That's correct.
And couldn't we do that next year? Just say, "Well, if we need 200 teachers, just eliminate central office." You keep going along that same pattern. Central office does have some functions that do need to occur, whether we agree with every position or not. You can't cut it forever. I know this is only one position, but I'd like to know who's going to lose their job out of this, so that we can put a teacher in the classroom.
You could get rid of ever one of those people up there that I've been talking about, and the school system would never know it. Let me give you illustration. And whereas they've got one of those people up there that goes to- it's supposed to be to see, make sure they're teaching the same subject, same algebra, say, or some kind of math. In words, you could go over that crockett, the supervisor couldn't stay in there five minutes and go to Hillsborough. If he couldn't tell they're teaching the same math, then he ought to be fired. Why would you hire somebody for a big salary to do something like that all the time and that's all to do? You've got a lot of them people up there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I see the point, Commissioner Lynch, but this is probably something we should be discussing in the entire budget process rather than the one position for growth at this point. When we are approving the entire budget, we could have had the same discussion and not approved the budget at that time, along with your logic. I'm not disagreeing with the logic, but I think the timing is wrong.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hester, please.
Yes, sir. This would come- and my question is, this funding would come from the undesignated fund balance of the school board, the schools. And I suppose, sir, my question is for Ms. Holman. But I do- I do wonder what percentage their undesignated fund balance is and what it has to be by state law. Thank you.
Thank you. Good question. Ms. Holman, would you address the chair, please?
I can't tell you exactly what our undesignated fund percentage is. I do know we've got about $8 million of undesignated fund balance. We needed to have 64- 6.4 million in for the 3%. So, we're about 1.8 or 1.2, something like that. The paper's back there, but over the minimum that they would like us to maintain in there.
Thank you. Other questions on the amendment that's on the table? Anybody want to address the amendment that hadn't talked on it? See none. 11-08-7, to approve the position with zero money, meaning that it will come from the existing school board budget. That's the amendment that's on the floor. If you're in favor of that amendment, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record a vote, please.
Eight yes, one abstain, 15 no.
Eight yes, one abstain, and 15 no. So, the amendment as presented fails. We're back to the initial resolution, number 11-07-7, as presented. Any discussion on the original resolution for $58,442? Commissioner Lynch?
What you need to understand is when you raise this budget, you automatically raise the next year's budget because the state is not going to let you put in less money. When we come up here next year and we go to vote this budget, and these people don't get a raise, we're in a whole lot of trouble, and that's what may come from. We don't need to be spending any more money. When they got people they could put in a position without it.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Shalfont, please.
Call the question.
Second. Commissioner Smith, the second, on the call of question. All in favor of the call of question, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Call of question has been adopted. Resolution 11-08-7. If you're in favor of 11-08-7 as presented, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Everybody voted, wishes to vote? Record a vote, please.
Nineteen yes, five no.
Nineteen yes, five no. Resolution is adopted. 11-08-8, resolution appropriating and amending the 2008-9 capital projects budget for parks and recreation by $5,000. Revenues to come from donation. Commissioner Lynch?
Move for approval.
Second. Commissioner Hancock, the second. Budget Committee report?
Four, five, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation?
This is money to help the senior citizens' welfare program, and it's donated money. It's not county money. It's donated money.
Thank you, sir. Other questions, Commissioner Lynch? I see none. 11-08-8 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record a vote, please.
Twenty-four yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. 11-08-9, resolution appropriating and amending the 2008-9 sheriff's department litter grant budget by $5,200. Revenues to come from state grant funds. Commissioner Lynch?
I move for approval.
Second. Commissioner Hancock, the second. Law Enforcement Public Safety Committee?
Seven, four, zero against.
Thank you, sir. Budget Committee?
Four, five, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Lynch?
This is money to go in the litter fund to clean up the roads, and if we have to prove this over here, it comes from the state.
Thank you, sir. Questions, Commissioner Lynch? I see none. If you're in favor of 11-08-9, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Everybody voted, wished to vote? Record a vote, please.
Twenty-four yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. 11-08-10, resolution appropriating and amending the 2008-9 election commission budget by $43,500. Revenues to come from state grant funds. Commissioner Lynch?
Move for approval.
Second. Second by Commissioner Hancock. Budget Committee report?
Four, five, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please.
What this is money from the state to help the voting in the county. And one thing we need to understand, if this is not enough money, then we'll have to come back later and appropriate more.
Very well.
Be county money.
Any questions, Commissioner Lynch? 11-08-10 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record a vote, please.
Twenty-four yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. 11-08-11, resolution supporting efforts pursuing dedicated funding for public transportation in the greater Nashville region. Commissioner Brockman, please.
Move for approval.
Second. Second. Commissioner Langston, Budget Committee report? Budget Committee report, Commissioner Lynch?
I'm sorry. Four, five, zero against.
Very good. Explanation, please. Commissioner Brockman?
This is a resolution in support philosophically with our partners in MPO to begin looking for a dedicated funding source for public transportation in the greater Nashville area. And it's something that our partners want to pursue, and Williamson County, being part of this, would like to see that as well, and so I hope you will support it.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Smith, please.
I understand that this is philosophically supporting public transportation, but it does put in writing that we support a dedicated funding source for public transportation. I don't have any problem supporting public transportation philosophically, but I'm a little nervous about voting for something that puts us on record supporting a dedicated funding source. I'd like to know what kind of dedicated funding source the state of Tennessee is likely to impose to get us to a regional public transportation system, which historically has not been able to pay its way anywhere that I know.
Excellent question.
Commissioners and Commissioner Smith, the purpose of this resolution does come from the greater GNRC through the MPO and the RTA, Regional Transportation Authority. Over the last several years, and particularly in the last several months, there's been a concentrated effort upon all of the mayors and cities and county mayors in looking at some type of sourcing, some type of long-term funding mechanism throughout the middle Tennessee area, as has been indicated by Mr. Brockman and by yourself. What we're actually asking for here is what's in the resolution, but over the period of the next year or two, is that with the support of the- each county and each city as they adopt this, that we would send this to our legislators and allow them to become engaged in trying to find a way to provide long-term transportation solutions, such as Mary has indicated. Ultimately, that decision would probably come back to the voters in the form of a voter referendum at each of your local areas. There's no question, we've got problems throughout our state, on the interstate, locally. There's no one entity other than TDOT who has been providing most of the funding for these transportation issues that we've got, and they certainly don't have enough to do it. I cannot stand here and tell you that there would not be some kind of adjustment on some type of sales tax, some type of an adjustment on many other user taxes that are involved in- in the state government. I just know that we need some solutions to transportation issues. Many of you know I'm not real fond of raising taxes. I do think there are ways within state and federal governments, though, that you could prioritize in what may have been important, how we're doing some money in some other areas. Not today because they're coming up with a shortfall. But I suspect, Steve, that this will be a two- or three-year period to begin that dialogue so that we can get some avenues of helping people get around. Currently, the only way that we can get around outside of our private automobiles and walking and bicycles, traditional methods, we do have the van pool that has been very successful, that has been very well received in our community. In fact, I think it was last month you approved some money for some additional vans. It was at a meeting earlier today. It's successful all over. We don't have a rail which we can use, a passenger rail. The only one that's in the immediate area is the Music City Star, and it's not performing in the way that it should from Wilson County back down to Davidson County and back because it can't make the frequency of runs that it needs to. Once it gets into the city of Nashville, it takes commuter, or MTA, and it takes commuter vans to get people to work, such as Vanderbilt and some of the other areas. Our interstate system, if you live below, going south on 96 heading down to 840, you can't get home in the afternoon and you can't get to work in the morning. Hillsborough Road, Franklin Road, all of these routes are just... Our hands are tied in exactly what we can do. Here in Williamson County, there is no way we have any extra dollars to be trying to figure a solution in which to solve a regional issue. Most of our money goes to public education, and that's what it should go for. We've got other needs all over our county, but we have got to find a solution to some of these public transportation issues. And, you know, I've been assured that the other mayors and ourselves, we'll have to bring it to a vote. Most people want some additional transportation mode in which to operate to and from. They just don't want to pay for it. And, you know, I would... I understand that. But at the same time, there's not a... Week goes by that somebody's not hollering at the mayor of Franklin or Brentwood or myself saying, "Find some solutions to these road issues." And I don't know if that... You know, I know there's a hesitancy about voting for this because it may be additional taxes, but I can only assure you, you're asking the legislators to concentrate on this to give us some solutions and help find some solutions. Ultimately, it's got to come back here.
Follow up, Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Walton, please.
The mayor answered my question. I just wanted to make sure that we had a say in it when it came back.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions on this resolution, 1108-11? Commissioner Wilson.
I had a quick question. Having grown up here and riding the inert bus system, I paid to go back and forth for years when I took my, you know, went to school after I graduated from high school and went to nursing. Can that, and as far as I know, that was never funded in part. I don't know that for sure, but I would feel that the citizens would be willing to pay whatever that might be as a fee. And I don't... I kind of see where Commissioner Smith is going as far as, is this going to set a precedent of something that we would have to do?
Can I respond? The inter... The interurban league you're talking about is no longer around. The reason it didn't make is because it didn't have enough money.
It went broke.
It went broke.
Went broke.
And the bus services that we're running on the van pools, I mean, they're just 15 passenger vans. That's the maximum size that we use. I don't have the answer, Cheryl. I really don't. All I'm asking for is if the legislators aren't committed to doing it, such as some of the other cities. And we always compare ourselves to Charlotte. And several of them, and I wasn't able to go last week, went to Cleveland, they've gone to Denver, to look at these heavy rail systems, light rail systems interfacing with a lot of this. And I think most of us probably won't see the fruits of that labor for years to come.
Yeah.
It will be the next generation and the next generation. As our community continues to grow, we have to be able to offer solutions other than just adding more lanes. Now, I know that's the way we've always done it, but there's not a lot of land. I mean, I don't... It's not in my... It's not in my repertoire as the county mayor, but we desperately need Mac Hatcher. And we're years away. There was some meetings that Joe Horn went to last week, and Franklin's committed a sizable amount of money to that project, and it's still years away for these people that live over here. And yet, by the same token, you heard the report tonight about less privilege tax, which is less building permits going on, which is going to be... It has an impact on people getting from point A to point B. And the answer is, it's just difficult to get additional lanes because it's so expensive. And I'm willing to try something outside and ask the legislators, let those other counties and cities become involved to help us with our... Help with some of the solutions. And again, I assure you, it'll have to come back here, but we've got to start somewhere. Each mayor cannot do it by himself.
And 840 is three to five years away.
No.
So...
I know.
Very good. Any other questions on 1108-11? See none. If you're in favor of 1108-11, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button? If everybody voted, wish to vote? Record a vote, please.
23 yes, one no.
23 yes, one no. Resolution is adopted. Resolution 1108-12, resolution authorizing the Williams County mayor to accept radio equipment from the city of Franklin. Commissioner Brockman, please.
Yes, move for approval.
Commissioner Hancock over here on the second. Property Committee report.
Five, four, zero against.
Law Enforcement Committee.
Seven, five, zero against.
Budget Committee.
Four, five, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This allows us to accept radio equipment from the city of Franklin, and that transfer needs to be authorized by this body.
Any questions on this resolution, 1108-12? Compliments and thanks to Mr. Bill Jorgensen. Bill, thank you for spearheading this through and appreciate you saving us some money. All in favor of 1108-12? Press your yes button. Opposed, your no button? Record a vote, please.
24 yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 1108-13, resolution authorizing the Williams County mayor to execute a deed amendment to deed of trust authorizing the subrogation of Williamson County's interest in a home grant loan provided for the renovations of a residential home. Commissioner Brockman.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Little, the second. Property Committee report.
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee report.
Four, five, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Brockman, please.
Yes, this is a resolution. It seems a little unusual, but in order for the language to be acceptable for this particular family to refinance this particular loan that was in the form of a grant, this will allow us to do this. Bobby Cook explained it to the property committee members who had questions about this change from an adjustable to a fixed rate, and this is what this particular family needs. The work has been done. It's been approved. This will just allow them to pay this with an interest rate that's something that they can more easily adjust to.
Thank you very much. Questions of Commissioner Brockman? I see none. 1108-13 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button? Everybody voted, wish to vote? Record a vote, please.
24 yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Late file resolution, 1108-14, resolution authorizing the Williams County mayor to enter into an agreement with Southern Health Partners, Inc., to provide health care services to juveniles being held at the Williamson County Juvenile Detention Center. Commissioner Lynch. Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Hancock, the second. Law Enforcement Committee.
Seven in favor of, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee.
Four, five, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Lynch.
This is just allow the county to help provide health service with juvenile service in a detention center.
Any questions of Commissioner Lynch? I see none. All in favor of 1108-14? Press your yes button. Opposed, your no button? Wilson and Para. Record a vote, please.
24 yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. 1108-15, resolution authorizing the Williams County mayor to enter into a grant agreement with the state of Tennessee Department of Health for youth-based smoking cessation and educational programs. Commissioner Shalfont, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Mills, the second. This was late filed as of late, late. Any discussion, questions of Commissioner Shalfont? Explanation, Commissioner Shalfont, please.
This is the application of grant funds for this particular program.
Any questions on educational programs as it relates to smoking and impact on young people? Questions? See none. 1108-15 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button? Record a vote, please.
24 yes.
24 yes, zero no. Resolution 1108-15 is adopted. We certainly thank you for being here. We will stand... Yes, Commissioner Lynch, please.
I'd like to say that even though tomorrow's Veterans Day, today, the United States Marine Corps is 233 years old, and it was formed in Tunne Tavern in Boston, Massachusetts.
Very good. Also, Linda reminds me that if you did not get one of these Williamson County presidential election buttons, she passed some of them out at the committee meeting the other night. If you didn't get one, please see her because she's got some extras, and she'll be glad to give you one of those. We will not meet in December. We'll be back together after the new year, so I wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving holiday and Merry Christmas to you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We're in adjournment. Have a great day.